How you permit the glorification of drug? The, never mind those states that want to legalize marijuana. Everything in the music. The access that our young kids have to this information. How are you going to fight that without putting and breaking the Constitution?
Yes, we don't want to break the Constitution.
No, we don't.
But here's what I tell you. Teddy Roosevelt called the presidency the bully pulpit. And it is an extraordinarily powerful tool if you know how to use it. If you know how to communicate to people, the presidency is the biggest microphone in the world. When the President of the United States speaks, people listen. Children listen, adults listen, people in foreign countries listen. We are still and will continue to be the most important and consequential nation in the world. And the leader of that nation has a great deal of influence on all of those things. I would tell you that I think that the permissiveness that you discuss has been contributed to by the President of the United States. And that's what I was implying in the last statement I made before we took questions. It's like, you cannot as President kind of do this wink and not, hey, I'm cool. You know, I smoked pot when I was young and maybe did some other stuff too. He didn't really talk about that, but he kind of, you know, winks at it a little bit. And then he lets, you know, Oregon and Colorado, Washington legalize marijuana, even though it's against federal law. He didn't do anything to stop it, even though he could as President. He doesn't. Those messages are subtle but powerful. Because if the President of the United States is telling our kids it's okay, and their parents are telling them it's not, they got an out. President says it's okay, President's letting them smoke pot in Colorado. What are you bothering me for? They're looking for an out. We remember, many of us in this room, when we were that age. We were looking for an out too, to do something we wanted to do that our parents didn't want us to do. We were looking for an excuse. I'm taking away that excuse as President. And in fact, I'm going to push back in the other way. So when I say Colorado, Washington, Oregon, get high now because it's ending. We will end it. We will end that permissiveness in those states. And we'll enforce the law. Justice will be more than just a word. It will be a way of life. The laws on the books, it will be applied to everyone. It will be applied to them equally, fairly, without prejudice or bias. But it will be applied. I'm a former federal prosecutor. I spent seven years of my life as the United States Attorney in New Jersey prosecuting crime. I know how to do this. And I will appoint an Attorney General who will not take any nonsense. But I will also talk about it to folks in the way that I spoke to you about it this morning, in a way that's compassionate and that understands that this is not an easy thing and just a choice. It gets much more complicated than that. And so just say no is not enough. I'll say that. But you got to say more, that when you do have the problem, you need to reach out to somebody. You need to get help. And I think when you talk about it in that way, it not only gives permission to those who have fallen victim to the disease to get help, but I think it also tells the other people who haven't tried yet, maybe I don't want to go there. Maybe I don't want to go through that. I don't want to go through going to jail. I don't want to go through dropping out of school. I don't want to go through the trips to the emergency room where they're putting the paddles on my chest to try to keep me alive and giving me Narcan to try to reverse the effects of the heroin. Maybe I don't want to go through that. And man, the President's talking to us about that and maybe I should listen. There's no silver bullet to fix this. There's no law that can be passed. But what we need to do is to be talking about it. The act of a President talking about it gives permission, if not an imperative, to families to talk about it. To neighbors and friends to talk about it. That's the way you change things in this country. Neighborhood to neighborhood. And that's what leadership is supposed to be about. No one ever said this was going to be easy. If it was easy, everybody would do it. It's hard, but it's worth it. And I think that's the only way we can do it. There's no other magic way to get it done. And that means it's going to take some time. And it means we're going to lose some lives in the process. We're going to. And it'll be horrible for each one of those families when that life is lost, like that family I met last night. But he is right. We need to honor the loss of his son by doing something about it. And that's the way I try to do it. It's not perfect, but I think it's the best way to do it. Yes, sir.
In the town of Plymouth--
I don't think he needs one.
In the town of Plymouth, we were told we were going to have a medical marijuana dispensary. There was a town hall meeting up here where the state people came up and they said, finally, the question was, well, this sounds like it's a done deal whether we want it or not. All the people in the town were saying, we don't want it here because of the university, because stuff. The state of New Hampshire said, it's a done deal whether you like it or not. And I didn't know that that was a communist government in our State House. And I didn't know that it was a communist government in Washington DC that tells the people how it's going to be. Our son is the Chief of Police of a town. He's got almost 30 years' service in. They can't even take some, right now, if you get drunk and you need to be taken in, they can arrest you for internal possession and hold you to protect you from yourself. You can't do that with drugs. There's no law that allows them to take somebody in the state of New Hampshire into protective custody, protect themselves. And then some lawyers took it and said, oh, the answer to that is legalize everything. You know, I'm going like, geez, whoa. They don't get it.
They don't. And listen, on medical marijuana, you know, we have that in New Jersey. It got signed into law at 3 o'clock in the morning, the morning I was going to be sworn in as Governor by my predecessor. One of his final gifts to me on the way out. He was a little aggravated that I had beaten him and decided to give me a number of gifts on the way out the door that he signed in the middle of the night. In New Jersey, what we've said though is, on medical marijuana dispensaries, if the community doesn't want it, they don't have to have it. And for the dispensaries, we've said, you got to go find a welcoming community that wants it. So the idea that, you know, the state would impose a dispensary on a community to me is contrary to everything that we're supposed to stand for. That community is supposed to be able to make the judgments as to what businesses come into their community and what businesses are not permitted in their community by their zoning and their ordinances and all the rest. So that makes no sense to me. I will tell you too, that the medical marijuana stuff is a very narrow thing when done correctly. Now, in New Jersey, we have, I've imposed this in a way to make it very, very narrow. You have to have two different doctors, all of whom are registered with our program, who get monitored. You have to have two different doctors prescribe it. There are only a certain narrow number of diseases that you can actually get this for. He has to go through a registration process. You have to go through a registration process and a monitoring process. We've had very few people sign up for the medical marijuana program in New Jersey because there are very few people who fit that criteria. The rest of them were looking for like what they had in Colorado at first, before they legalized the whole thing, which was, you know, I got a headache, can I have some pot? You know, might make your headache feel better, but I don't know that it's necessary. Yadville works too. You know, this type of activity in our country, you know, is leading to what this woman said in her question. You know, a certain permissiveness that sends the wrong signal. And, you know, signals matter. Now, on the medical marijuana front, there are some people who it does help. And for those folks, I have no problem with it making available to them. If it can, if it's the only thing that can alleviate their suffering, that's fine. But lots of people use that as a foot in the door to broaden it. And that's where leaders have to be vigilant about not letting that happen. We've been very vigilant in New Jersey about it. We don't impose things on the communities and we don't allow people who are not truly sick with the number of diseases that really marijuana's been medically proven to alleviate pain or seizure activity. Those are the only ones that we allow to do it for. And I think, even though I wouldn't have signed that bill into law if it were put on my desk, the other thing about this too is, unlike the President of the United States, I don't pick and choose the laws I enforce. I took an oath to say I would enforce the laws of the state of New Jersey, even the ones I don't like. And if you don't do that, then you contribute to lawlessness throughout the country. Because if we can all start picking and choosing which laws we enforce as leaders, then I assume you get to pick and choose which laws you get to comply with as the governed. I don't think that's the kind of society we're looking to have. Yes, sir, right there.
In July, you would indicate that you would be defunding Planned Parenthood if you were elected President?
Yes, sir.
If you do that, the question was, in July, you indicated you would defund Planned Parenthood if elected. If you do that, how will you replace the general health care provided by Planned Parenthood apart from the abortion services?
Federally qualified health clinics, which operate all throughout this country, are funded both federally and with state money. We have over 110 federally qualified health clinics just in the state of New Jersey. And the thing I like about the federally qualified health clinics is that they treat everyone, men and women, for the full range of their medical challenges, whatever they are. And the attitude I have about this is, you should be treating the whole person. And if federally qualified health clinics, you can. You don't have to hop from doctor to doctor. You go to the same clinic, you see the same physicians. And it helps to make sure that your health care you're getting is consistent, efficient and effective, not only for the patient but for the taxpayer. So we have the ability to do this. And there's this myth that's been exploded now by these hearings, you know, that Planned Parenthood provides mammograms. Let me make it clear to all of you. The President of Planned Parenthood testified at Congress that not one Planned Parenthood clinic provides one mammogram. What they do is if a woman comes and needs a mammogram, they're referred by Planned Parenthood to a place that actually does mammograms. Well, federally qualified health clinics, some of them have those machines in there already, but they could do the same kind of referral. This is a political argument. And I want to make sure that no matter where you are on the economic spectrum, that you can get health care for yourself and for your family. Federally qualified health clinics can do that. And I cannot, I defunded Planned Parenthood in New Jersey six years ago, in my first year as Governor, and they've gotten no funding from the state of New Jersey since then. And I vetoed eight different bills to attempt to override that defunding of Planned Parenthood. And here's why. I cannot support an organization with taxpayer money that has engaged in the systematic murder of children in the womb in a manner in which it allows them to maximize the value of certain body parts for sale on the open market after the child is murdered. I'm sorry, I just can't. And I don't think taxpayers should be forced to do that. If folks want to do that with their own private funds, that's their choice. You want to write a check to Planned Parenthood and support their mission? I have no objection to that. That's your right as an American to support the organizations you want. But I don't believe it's right for us to impose upon other Americans through their tax money on the idea that they would support something that they find to be morally reprehensible. And so we have other avenues to be able to do this. We've done it. We've done it in New Jersey. And I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't do it on the federal level and make sure that folks between federally qualified health clinics and Medicaid, people have access either through individual physicians that are Medicaid eligible or through these clinics to be able to get the full range of health care services that they need. And the idea that, you know, Planned Parenthood is the only place to go for that is a myth. Ma'am, in the back, right there.
Welcome to New Hampshire again, Governor Christie. And I'm happy to hear everything you've said I agree with. I can't believe it, but it's true.
Tremendous. Okay, everybody, goodbye. We'll see you later.
But I do have an area that hasn't been mentioned that I have a real passion for, and that's the senior health care. And the senior care, you know, as they get older. We've got, I've been in health care my whole life and then I was part of, I was an agent for health care insurance because I wanted to help seniors. They have so many things they have to decide that they have no clue about and they shouldn't have a clue about it, okay? And you think out of the box. And I hope when you're President that you wind up looking at the process because we have great health care but terrible processes. When I started working in health care, it was taking care of the patient. Now it's taking care of pharmaceutical companies and administrators and everybody that's not a health care professional. That's where most of the money goes. So the processes have to be looked at so that we can wind up having the family also take part. I think the education regarding preventing, putting research money in that area, all of that is good. Because our seniors right now with their families, if they in fact say aren't well enough to be at home and have to go to a nursing home, there are so many catastrophes. Why isn't something there for families to be able to utilize to take care of their mother and father, their grandmother, their grandfather? Some help there. So if you could touch base on what you think about that area, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, let me tell you what we've done in New Jersey that I think has worked and may have some applicability to the whole country. We've moved away in New Jersey from the nursing home model and moved much more towards home care and put money, more resources into it. We've cut back on the reimbursements to nursing homes in order to take that money and fund it for folks who want to take care of, as you said, their mother or father, their grandmother or grandfather, in their own home to provide home health care, folks to be able to help them, to help along with whatever their treatment is needed. Everything from folks who have Alzheimer's to folks who have other debilitating diseases that are chronic. And so there's not going to be an immediate death, but there is going to be a slow, low and long, I'm going to try to speak on Saturday morning, a slow and long deterioration. And so we've seen some really good success in that, not only in the results we're getting, but more importantly, in the response from families who are, many of them scared to death of sending their loved one off to a nursing home and that what might happen to them when they're there. Now, that's not an indictment of the nursing home industry because there's many nursing homes, in fact, most in my experience in New Jersey, who care deeply about their patients and work really hard to make sure they get good treatment. But there's a detachment then from the family that lots of families are now saying, hey, I want to keep my mother or father, my grandmother or grandfather close to me. I want them to be in familiar surroundings. I want them to feel loved as their life ends. And I don't want them to be in a more sterile kind of institutional type of setting. We're doing that not only with the elderly, we're doing that with the developmentally disabled and moving folks out of institutions and much more into group homes and private home situations. And I think it can not only be more humane, but it also could be more cost effective over the long term. And so I think that's one of the things that we've done in New Jersey that we've seen some success with. And that's something we need to consider when we're looking at Medicare and Medicaid and how they deal with these individual issues. And if you go on my website, you'll see I have an entire plan on entitlement reform that deals with seniors and soon to be seniors on Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid and Social Security Disability Insurance. And I urge you to look at it. It's the only plan any candidate's put out there. No other candidate in this race has dealt with entitlements, yet 71% of our spending in the federal government right now are on entitlements and debt service. 71%. We need to get a handle on that because if we don't, not only will we bankrupt our country, but we will abandon those seniors because there won't be money there to help to take care of them, which they need and many folks are depending upon to be able to keep their lives going in retirement. So that's the way I would deal with that particular situation. And then if you look at my website at chrischristie.com, there's a lot more there on entitlements in general that I think, you know, you should look at. And after you look at it, come back to another town hall meeting and ask me about it or challenge me on the stuff that you don't like because I'd love to talk to you about it. Yes, sir.
I call it a entirely different subject that really none of the candidates I've heard talk about. The first issue I have a problem with is, of course, our huge debt. But the question is, what would you do about our space program and the continuation of the space program?
It's interesting. I have never been asked this until the last 24 hours. And I've had two people on the opposite ends of the age spectrum ask me this. Last night at Dartmouth, I had a Dartmouth College student ask me about the space program. And now I've had you ask me about the space program. Well, regardless, regardless of what your age is, you're clearly not a freshman at Dartmouth, that much I know. Here's my point, and it ties right into my answer to that lady's question. If we don't get entitlement spending under control, I got no money for the space program. I got no money for national defense. I've got no money for science and technology. I've got no money for education. I've got no money. We have a $19 trillion debt. We can't even imagine what that number is. It's unfathomable to us. It's just a number. 19 trillion. We don't get entitlement spending under control, everybody. That's all we're going to be spending money on. It's 71% of what we're spending already. So I would love to invest in the space program because it leads to other cutting edge technologies that we not only use to go back to the moon or to Mars, but that we use in our everyday lives here on Earth. So I'd love to do that and I'd love to be able to invigorate a new generation of scientists and engineers to say, we're going to be the ones who are going to come up with the idea to get this country to Mars and back safely. And then have those engineers and scientists be the ones who then also invent the next number of inventions that lead America to continue to be the country that's on the cutting edge of innovation and technology in the world. But I'm telling you, if we don't get this other problem under control, we do not have the money. We don't have the money to do any of it. The plan that I put forward that I asked you to go and take a read on is, it'll save $1.2 trillion over the next 10 years and do so in a way where it's really not harming anybody who's in the system now and just acknowledges that all of us are living longer lives and we have to change the programs to acknowledge that blessing. That the average life expectancy of a woman now in America is 83 and the average life expectancy of a man is 79. I saw someone smile there. One of the ladies smile? Just remember that 10 years ago, you were six years ahead of us. 10 years later, you're only four. We are gaining on you. And that four-year vacation from us you're thinking you're going to get at the end, you may be stuck with us the whole time, the whole time. But this is a blessing, right, that we're living this much longer? But remember, these programs were implemented at a time when average life expectancy for men and women were in the mid 60s. So we're living 15 to 20 years longer. And all those 15 to 20 years are for most people in retirement. And so it is an enormous stress on the system and we need to do something to change that. So I would love to invest in the space program because not only is it an aspirational thing that makes America feel good about itself in a kind of psychic way, but it also is an enormous contributor to science and technology that is apart from direct application to space that helps us to keep on the cutting edge of those things. But I'm going to be honest with you. If we don't get agreement on this other stuff, I don't have the money to do it. Yes, sir.
Hi there. I'm actually Vice President of the College Republicans from the state.
All right.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming up here. A lot of candidates tend to ignore the North Country a little bit. And we get a lot of people at Dartmouth and UNH, but--
I picked a good weekend to come to the North Country though, right? I mean, seriously, I walked out, I'm like, this is really nice. I said to my, I said to my security staff, I go, last warm weather trip to New Hampshire. I guarantee you, this is going to be it. So enjoy it while you can.
So I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of our group for coming here. We have a couple more of us in the corner.
Great.
I wanted to ask, as President, what would you do to make American energy cheaper, cleaner and more reliable?
All right. We are on the edge of being able to have an energy revolution in this country because of the new ways that we're exploring for energy and the technological ways we're developing renewable energy. So let's start with exploration. The way to make us independent and make it more reliable is to explore for more oil and natural gas. We have now, scientists are saying, 100-year supply of natural gas underneath the ground here in the United States. Extraordinary. And we have the ability to go and get it in environmentally safe ways. And because of the advances in drilling, we have access to even more oil than we've ever had before. We need to exploit those resources. We need to exploit them not only for reliability here in the United States, but it can be an important geopolitical tool for us. And I'll get back to that part in a second. Let me tell you what we've done in New Jersey. In New Jersey, without being in the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, which unfortunately for all of you, you're a part of here in the Northeast, which means it just adds a tax to you because they say they're going to clean the air by making another tax on you. Fascinating thing. And we're going to change the world just here in the Northeast of the United States. I pulled out of it when I became Governor of New Jersey because I didn't want to add another tax to my citizens and make their utility bills even more expensive. But without being in that Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, we've already met our clean air goals for 2020 by 2014. How'd we do it? 53% of New Jersey's electricity is generated by nuclear power. Now, think about that because New Jersey is the most densely populated state in America. 8.9 million people in that little space. That's why we get a little cranky every once in a while, that's all. Lot of people there. But we've operated for four decades, nuclear reactors in our state safely. Three Mile Island was a long time ago, everybody. And we need to revisit nuclear, in my opinion. It does not add to the pollution in our air and it is a safe and reliable source of energy. And we've been using it for 40-plus years in New Jersey. We have the oldest operating nuclear reactor in the country at Oyster Creek in New Jersey. And it's going to be closing in the next two years because it's reached the end of its useful life. But without a problem ever, 53% in nuclear. Tonight, if you happen to go out to a bar somewhere, which I know college students don't do, but if you happen to, just wander in to pick up something to eat or something, you can win a bet. Ask somebody at the bar, who are the top three states producing solar energy in the country? First two are easy, California and Arizona. And then most people would guess that, maybe they'd guess Florida. You give them, you know, one phone a friend or Lifeline. But you know, it's, you know, third is New Jersey. The third largest solar energy producing state in the country is New Jersey. How did it happen? Because we partnered with the private sector to make solar energy affordable for people. If it's affordable, people are willing to do it. And you drive through New Jersey, you will see on the roofs of homes, on the roofs of manufacturing plants and other businesses, in front of large corporate office buildings, big solar arrays. And we're now producing the third most solar energy in the country. That's wonderful because we made it affordable for people. When it wasn't affordable, nobody did it. But in working with the private sector to make it affordable now, we're doing that in New Jersey. In Iowa, when I drive around Iowa, there are wind turbines everywhere. Well, Iowa's a big, flat state where wind turbines on the ground makes sense. Let's let Iowa do wind energy. Makes sense for them. Let's let them do it. Let's empower them to do it. I don't think it would work in New Jersey. You know, we start putting wind turbines on land, they're not going to just be dead birds, everybody. There could be dead people, you know? Because a little edgy there, you know? So we, my point on renewables is that each state should be able to decide for itself which renewable makes sense for us, given our topography, our geography, which one makes sense for us. Because people will use renewable energies if they're affordable. If they're not affordable, they're going to say, heck with it. You know, I'm not going to do that. That's the kind of energy approach I want to take to the country. Is on renewables, let's let each state make decisions about what makes sense for them, what's affordable for them, what's attractive to their citizens. And overall, in our country, let's continue to explore aggressively for oil and natural gas and invest in the technologies that make economic sense. Last part to think about about energy is this. Right near Vladimir Putin is running roughshod over us in Eastern Europe and now in Syria. And part of the way to hem him in, I think, would be more aggressive economic sanctions against Russia by ourselves and our friends in Western Europe. Here's the problem. In Western Europe, they get a great deal of their energy from Russia. And it puts them in a real bind. You know, love to help you out, don't like what he's doing in Crimea or Ukraine, but I have to tell you, we don't want cold homes in the winter. America can become an oil and gas exporter. And if we team with Canada and Mexico and make North America the energy continent of the world, we can then supply that energy to those folks jointly with our friends in Canada and Mexico and not ask for anything in return except just to be paid a fair market price. But what it will do is get them off of the dependence with Russia. Then we can say to them, we're going to give you this energy. You can buy it from us. We're not asking anything in return except for, how about some more sanctions on Putin? And then they don't have to worry about it. And that will make the world a much more interesting place for us and a much better place for everyone else if Mr. Putin could be put back in his cage, which is what we need to do. So I think the energy helps us in a bunch of ways. It can help us to be independent here and have lower energy costs here and a more robust economy. The last part of it too is, we can attract manufacturing jobs back here if we make our electricity lower cost. Because manufacturing jobs, there's two major drivers of cost, labor and energy. Now, we can't compete with China or Mexico on labor costs and we don't want to. We don't want to have, you know, folks not being able to make a middle-class wage working in manufacturing. But we can compete with them on energy and we should, especially China. And a lot of those manufacturing jobs will leave China, come back to the United States if we get our energy costs down. And that's something that would be a real welcome change in this country, especially for the middle class that hasn't gotten a wage increase, a real wage increase in 15 years. So it's a good question. It has a lot of different layers to it. Yes, sir, in the back.
How would you cut waste and incompetence in government, particularly in the Veterans Administration, but throughout all agencies?
Well, the first way to cut waste and incompetence is-- The first way to cut waste and incompetence is when I become President, to tell my Cabinet officials to find every bureaucrat that was hired by Barack Obama and fire them. On the VA in particular, let me tell you what my plan is for the VA and for veterans. First is that we made a promise to veterans in this country that if you put your life on the line, if you wore your country's uniform, that we would take care of your health care for the rest of your life. And we've broken that promise to many, many veterans. So in the short term, what we need to do is to say to every veteran, "Go with your veteran's card, to any doctor, any hospital, any health care provider in this country, not pre-approved, not anything else, anyone, and the federal government will pay for your health care." Because that's the promise that we made. That's what we need to do. But we also need to fix the VA, because there's a lot of expertise in the VA that we don't wanna throw away. And there's a lot of really compassionate people who care about veterans in the VA, who I don't wanna punish because they didn't have anything to do with the incompetence. So what I would do is, with all due respect to the admirals and the generals, who we've put in charge of the VA traditionally over time, the VA is no longer something to be run by the military. It's to be run... It's a hospital system. That's what it is. And so what I want is to be able to go to the best hospital CEO in the country and say to him or her, "Listen, your country needs you for the next two years. Leave your private sector job, come and run the Veterans Administration and straighten out this hospital system. Bring the private sector efficiencies and effectiveness and transparency that exists in our private sector health system and bring it to the VA." I think that's the best way to fix it. Because I don't wanna throw it away. We have too much invested in it to throw it away. But we cannot any longer allow it to lie and cheat our veterans because they're losing their lives in the process. And that's a sin. We can't have that. And so that's the way I would deal with it. And more broadly across all government, I would say to each one of my Cabinet Secretaries, "You need to go initially, in your first year, and find one penny of waste for every dollar that we send you." Doesn't seem hard, right? But let me tell you, in a $3-trillion budget, if they find one penny of waste for every dollar we send, we're gonna get rid of a lot of waste. And what I'd say to them is, "If you can't find that penny in the first year, then go get a new job." Because you should be able to find that. And if you're not competent enough to find that, well then heck, I'll find someone who is. So that's how I do it more broadly across the government. Right? Let's go to you right here, sir.
You just said that we should fire all of the bureaucrats. Is it really... Do you want to expand and revise your... Are you really saying we're gonna do away with the Civil Service Act?
No, no, no. No, no. What I'm saying is...
If we're firing federal bureaucrats, then...
No, no. What I said was, hired by the Obama Administration.
Bureaucrats?
Those are... Well, listen, I consider political appointees, once they're in the government, to be bureaucrats also.
Alright.
And that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about civil service folks.
Which is different from what you said. Good.
No, no, it's not.
I don't want the cameras back there to say that you just did away with it.
This is the... If I want to get... Listen, I wouldn't, by the way, I wouldn't mind getting rid of civil service because being a governor who operates in a situation where we have both, in the government now, people are allowed to be civil service and be unionized at the same time. How does that make any sense? We have public-sector unions who also have civil service. I mean, that's belt and suspenders. What happens when you're trying to manage a government, like I'm trying to manage in New Jersey, is you have to deal with two different grievance processes. So you have an incompetent employee, he grieves you under the civil service process. If you win there, he then grieves you under the union process. You know why no one gets fired in government? Because of that. Because if you're sitting at the top of it, you go, "How much am I spending on lawyers? How much have I spent? I'm spending three times what I pay this joker in order to get rid of him." And a lot of people just throw up their hands and say, "To hell with it. Just let him stay." So, since we brought up civil service, which was not what I was talking about, but since you brought it up, I wouldn't have a big problem getting rid of civil service or unions, one or the other. But I don't know why we have to have both in the public sector. Civil service has been around forever, so let's stop unionizing public-sector workers. Because I don't understand why they need a union when they're protected by civil service and the grievance process that exists in civil service and the step process on salaries that exists in civil service. Yet, we've allowed them to unionize too. And it's an extraordinary waste of time and money, and those unions have become the most powerful political force in the Democratic Party. The most powerful. The Teachers Union and all the other public-sector unions. Not talking about the carpenters and the plumbers and the pipe fitters in the private sector. I'm talking about, we've allowed government workers to unionize while they're also protected by civil service. And I think that's ridiculous. And we should get rid of one or the other. I don't care which one you get rid of. Whether you get rid of unionizing them or you get rid of civil service. We should get rid of one of them because it's incredibly wasteful and it places an enormous restriction on the executive to be able to actually run the government in a way that this gentleman implies he wants me to run it, which is get rid of some waste. Well, it's hard to get rid of waste when you gotta go through three years of grievance processes to fire one person in a government of millions and millions of people. But to be clear about what I meant in my answer to his question was, those folks hired by the President, meaning those people who he had political discretion over to hire, which are throughout government, not just the Cabinet Secretaries and the sub-cabinet, you've got political appointees. Go to something online. If you're really bored one night and you're having trouble sleeping, go to something called the Plum Book. The Plum Book in federal government, that is all of the jobs that the President has discretion to give outside of civil service. You will get five nights' sleep by the time you get through the entire Plum Book. Those are the people I'm talking about. If you wanna see specifically who I'm talking about, those are the folks I'm talking about. Yes, sir?
Hi, Governor. We've got a big lake out here, Winnipesaukee. I don't know if you saw it, driving around the neighborhood?
I've been on it.
Okay.
I was on it on Mitt Romney's boat.
Yeah?
That's quite an adventure.
I don't know about Mitt's boat, but I'm...
I'll tell you about it if you want.
I'm an ex-Air Force guy. I should've maybe been in the Navy with that lake out there because when I'm out there, I don't know about Mitt, but a lot of rocks, I'll hit rocks, it'll put a hole in the boat. And the first thing I worry about is patching that hole and stopping the water from coming in, okay? So with that, I'll take care of the water afterward. So what I'm wondering is, if you patched up the holes on the border, how do you... What's your plan to handle the water already in the boat? And I don't know if this is...
Quite the analogy. I wanna applaud you. That was very good.
I don't know. You probably have this on your website, but I... And you may have said this on stage, but you don't get much time up there, so...
You're not kidding. I'm happy to answer it again. But that is, seriously, the most artful way I've been asked about immigration. And I get asked about immigration almost every time. I'm happy to answer it again. Listen, let me tell you what we're not gonna do. What we're not gonna do is deport 11 million people in two years. Okay, that's been suggested. Alright, let me make you understand what that looks like. Okay? That's 15,000 people a day, every day, for two years. 15,000 people a day, every day, for two years. First off, who's gonna do that? I've been in law enforcement for seven years before I was Governor. There are not enough law enforcement officers at the local, county, state, and federal level if all they did was that, to do that, first off. So if you're advocating that, you must be advocating an enormous expansion of law enforcement in this country, and I wanna know how you're gonna pay for it. Second, I want you to think about how that's gonna look. Because we're gonna see it, you know? And I wanna know what you think when we're gonna be knocking down doors. And police officers, federal agents, are gonna be dragging people out of those homes in handcuffs and putting them on what exactly? A bus? A van? And then taking them where exactly? They're not all from Mexico, okay? 40% of the 11 million came here on a visa, came here at our invitation. And they overstayed their visa. They're from all over the world. How are we gonna do this? So let's be commonsensical about it. The way I would deal with the water on the boat is two things. First, e-Verify. Most of the folks who come here illegally come here to work. Not like Hillary Clinton thinks to vote, but they come here to work, okay? If every business in this country is required to use e-Verify, which means to require that they, before they hire someone, verify that person's legal status to work in this country, a lot of those folks will leave if they can't get a job. And the penalty, excuse me, for businesses should be, if you hire someone after the law's passed that's here illegally, your fine is double whatever it is you made off of that person. See, businesses in the business of making money. And if you're gonna bill them twice what they made, they're gonna stop that conduct pretty quickly. We've got to acknowledge the fact that a porous border is not the only thing that contributes to this. It is businesses who are hiring these folks because they wanna hire cheaper workers and not pay Americans more money. Alright, so that's one of the ways. Second way is on the visa system. Now, I talked about this back in the summer here in New Hampshire, got a lot of attention. I said, "If FedEx can track a package from the minute it leaves your door to the minute it gets to the door where you're sending it to, and you can go on the computer and see exactly, it's on the truck, it's on the plane, it's in the airport, right? Like, who needs to know that really? But you can do that now. You can find that out." Why is it that people come into this country and we can't make sure they only stay as long as they are supposed to stay? What I would do is, every person who comes in here on a visa, student visa, tourist visa, other work visa that has a finite time to it, you get a thumbprint from that person. And you put it on a database. And then you require businesses, when you access certain services, renting cars, other things, to give the thumbprint. If it pops up that you've overstayed your time, we tap you on the shoulder and say, "Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Time to go home." It's like, you know, you invite somebody, you know, a couple weeks to come to your house for Thanksgiving. And all of a sudden, two days later, you go upstairs to the guest bedroom and they're still there. Like, you invited them, but just for Thanksgiving, not for the whole holiday season. And, you know, when I said this, the press said, "Oh, Christie wants to track immigrants like packages." No. First of all, these people are not immigrants. They are temporary visitors. Tense the name "visa." They're a temporary visitor to our country. I had someone say, "Do you wanna put barcodes on everybody that come in?" These are legitimate questions that I've gotten from the media. Another one said to me on CNN, she looked at me and said, "Do you wanna put chips in people's bodies when they come?" Let me be clear about this. We don't need to put a chip or a barcode. You got them right there. There's your barcode, right there. Everybody's fingerprints are unique to that person. That's all we need to do. If we do those two things, that's how we deal with the water. And it's realistic, and it's affordable, and it's the right thing to do. That, in addition to doing the things we need to do with the border, which I've talked about many times, will help to deal with this problem. But be wary of someone who says they're gonna deport 11 million people in two years, okay? I mean, I've been in this business. It's not gonna happen. And be careful of candidates who tell you what they think you wanna hear. "It feels really good. It feels really good, but it's kinda like Chinese food." Right? You know what I mean about that, right?
Yeah.
You have Chinese food, right? You have Chinese food, and then like two hours later, you're hungry again. Like, what happened? I ate the Chinese food. What happened? Listen, what you need to do is to have a candidate who is going to actually tell you what they're gonna do and that it's gonna be realistic and can be done. And the only way to know that is from experience. I wouldn't know that it was impossible to do that if it wasn't for the fact that I spent seven years in law enforcement. Experience matters. And I understand that there's lots of people right now, it's fashionable to be saying, "Well, you know, the government stinks." Fine, Washington does stink. So we wanna send somebody down there who, you know, doesn't have any experience at all, so you can just blow the thing up. Well, the guy with no experience can blow it up. I guarantee you that. But then, who's gonna rebuild it after he blows it up? So I think the folks in New Hampshire are a lot smarter than that. That's why the rest of America's counting on you to make the smart choice, the right choice. And this issue is one where it really is stark in terms of the differences between people who can, you know, know how to do these things and people who are just talking about ideas. And there's a difference. That's why I would deal with the water in your boat. Don't hit the rocks anymore. I'll tell you one quick story about Romney's boat, since we got on Romney's boat. So I stayed at Mitt and Ann Romney's, Mary Pat and I did, and a couple of our children, for Fourth of July weekend. And they're wonderful friends of ours, as you all probably remember. I came up here in the fall of 2011 as the first governor in the country to endorse Governor Romney for President. And so we've been friends for a long time. And he invited us for Fourth of July. So we came up and he took us out on the boat. Now, you know, Mitt Romney has this reputation, right, of being this conservative, staid, kind of buttoned-up kinda guy. Go on his boat with him. You'll get an entirely different impression of Mitt Romney. We pulled out of the dock near their home and we went out onto the lake. And let me tell you, man, this guy guns that boat. I mean, guns it. We take off so fast that I'm in one seat and sitting right next to me is Ann Romney. He hit it so hard that she flew off her seat and landed on my lap. I'll leave it at that. It was a good trip around Lake Winnipesaukee, is all I can say. And we had fun with the Romneys, but they're... So this image of Mitt Romney is the guy who's always very buttoned up. Get Mitt Romney on his boat. He's a lot of fun. And he enjoys taking that boat around the lake, and it's a beautiful lake to ride around. And it really made for a fun Fourth of July weekend for me and Mary Pat and for our two older children who were with us. So they're good friends and it's great to have them as friends. Yes, ma'am?
Governor, terrorism is... Oh, sorry, thank you. Terrorism, it's big. It's across the world, but it's also in small-town USA. And if you could elaborate on your plans for terrorism in the United States as well as in the world?
Sure. I would tell you that this issue hits particularly home for me. I was named U.S. Attorney by President George W. Bush on September 10th, 2001 in New Jersey. And I took the next day off from work. My wife, on the other hand, went to her job like she normally did. Left at 6 o'clock in the morning, drove to the train station, took the train to the PATH station, and took the path into the World Trade Center. And then walked the two blocks from the World Trade Center to her office. And I took the kids to school that day and then I went out for a walk, thinking about, "Wow, I've got a new career here and new opportunity." It was a beautiful day, as you all remember. And I came back, turned on the TV, and the first building was on fire. And I called her immediately. I said, "What the heck's going on?" And she said, "I don't know. I could see it out my window." She said, "It's a big fire," she said, "but they're saying it was a commuter plane that got like off course or something. It's nothing to be worried about, and so we're all just sitting here working." I said, "Alright." I said, "Wow, it looks bad." And she said to me, "Well, no, they say it's okay." And while we were on the phone, the second plane hit the second building. And she said, "They're telling us we have to evacuate the building to the basement. I'll call you later." She hung up, and it was five and a half hours that I didn't hear from her. And in the meantime, both buildings collapsed. There was all kinds of talk, as you remember on TV, about pipe bombs and other things in other places in Manhattan, all of which turned out to be false, but we didn't know it at the time. At the time, our children were eight and five and one. And the eight and the five-year-old were at school, and school called us and said, because there were so many in our area of North Jersey who had parents who go to work in Lower Manhattan, that they told all the children at school about what had happened. So I knew that my kids were coming home and wanted... First question was gonna be, "Where's mom?" And I was dealing in my own mind with two things. One, what was I gonna tell them? And two, if the worst had really happened, I was confronting the idea of being a single parent to three young children and losing my best friend. Fortunately, at about 2:30 that afternoon, about 15 minutes before the kids got there, she called. And she had walked with a wet t-shirt wrapped around her face with about 15 of her colleagues uptown to a bar where they finally found an operating payphone. And she was able to call me. And she got on a boat on the east side of Manhattan to take her to the Jersey Shore. And when I went down to pick her up, they wouldn't let you get too close to the dock. And I saw what I thought was my wife walking down the street, wrapped in a blanket and soaking wet. I said, "What happened to you?" And she said, "Well, when we got off the boat, if you were from Lower Manhattan, the fire department was there, and they didn't want you to bring any of the contaminants into New Jersey. So they hosed you down with a fire hose and wrapped you in a blanket." 9/11 is not something in the history books for me. I lived it. And so it affects everyone, right? And we've now had 14 years without an attack of that scale on American soil. I will tell you, that's not by accident. And what I'm worried about in this country now is that we're beginning to get some amnesia. That we're beginning to forget what it felt like. I mean, I went to those funerals. We had one of our good friends in our parish who was killed that day. My wife helped him get his job in the World Trade Center. My oldest son's best friend's dad was killed that day. My oldest son's best friend's dad was killed that day. Right? You were at the Pentagon. So you understand, and any of us who went through this in that personal way, it never leaves you. It never leaves you. And so, just leave it at that. Um, so, as president, um, I'm gonna be, and I am the only person on that stage that's prosecuted terrorists. I did the Fort Dix six case, that you all might remember, of the six Islamic jihadists who were plotting to attack Fort Dix and kill American servicemen and women. We intervened in that case before they were able to do that, arrested them, and they're in jail for life. Um, we did the shoulder-fire missile case with the Indian-born British citizen who was selling, selling shoulder-fire missiles to a Yemeni terrorist group to shoot commercial airliners out of the sky at Newark Airport. I understand that what we need to do in this country is enhance our intelligence capability, not diminish it, like Senator Paul led the fight to do in the Congress. We need to trust our intelligence officers, they're doing an ugly, difficult job around the world.